Half a minute early. Welcome to the April 25th St. Charles County Council meeting. First item is to return from our closed session. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to return to open meeting.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll start off with an invocation. We have the honor of having with us today Reverend Les Elam from Springdale, Arkansas. And if his name sounds familiar, I think one of our fellow council people can give him a better introduction than I can. And that will be followed then by Pledge of Allegiance Joe Cronin. Mr. Elam.
This is my father who's up visiting. He was a Southern Baptist minister for 58 years and at 83 he decided it was time to retire. So, he's up trying to straighten me out, which looking at the crowd, I think there's some of you in here who would agree that needs to happen. So, he's gonna pray for us tonight. So Dad, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Everyone, please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for our nation and the freedoms and opportunities that we have. We thank you for men and women who are willing to give their time to see that our freedoms and opportunities are retained. Pray your blessings on this meeting tonight. It would be in accordance to your will and we thank you for Jesus, what he did for us on Calvary. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we know where you've got your eloquence from.
There you go.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cronin.
Here.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a final vote on Bill Number 5055, which is Conditional Use Permit for Final Passage.
Bill Number 5055, An Ordinance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-21, For Private School To Lynn P. Melson As Trustee For The Lynn P. Melson And Tamara T. Melson Revocable Qualified Spousal Trust Property Owners.
Is there any discussion or questions for council members? Mr. Cronin? Or Mr. Brazel?
Yeah, just in my district, I had received zero phone calls or zero complaints about this. I think it's a great idea that someone wants to start a private school, considering some of the issues we have in our public school system, so I do support this.
Please then read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 5055, An Ordinance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-21, For A Private School To Lynn P. Melson As Trustee For The Lynn P. Melson And Tamara T. Melson Revocable Qualified Spousal Trust Property Owners. Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And the bill passes. Next on the agenda are public comments. Do we have any comment cards?
John Baer.
Just to remind you, it's a three-minute comment period. We have the timer up here. When your time is up, you'll hear the timer go off and we'll thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Let's see if we can get.
It'll come up in a second.
Okay.
Do I need to do any?
No.
No.
Is it an R or something?
There's a problem.
He's gonna go to China.
Okay.
Dad, okay.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm John Baer from Augusta, Missouri. I have worked as a volunteer election judge in both St. Louis and St. Charles County for about 10 years. I want to bring to your attention tonight a serious problem we discovered on Election Day at our polling place in Augusta. We found that the system our county uses for voter check-in would actually allow someone to vote twice. Once absentee and a second time, again, on Election Day in person. Here's, let me explain a bit. Here's the voting process at the polls, and you've all experienced this. You walk in, present an ID, and a Republican and a Democrat election judge look you up with these poll pads in the registration database, and that's nothing more than an iPad with some fancy software in it. This confirms their name, address, and eligibility to vote. Next, the voter signs the poll pad screen, and then both judges initial it and they initial a paper ballot for the voter. Finally, the voter completes their ballot in private and inserts it into, this might look familiar, electronic voting machine. The ballot goes in. The problem we discovered is this. The poll pad is supposed to flag several things, like an incorrect address or being at the wrong polling place, or if they've already voted. In such cases, the voter should not be given another ballot, by me, the election judge. But the absentee ballot check was not working. That's what we should've seen on the screen if someone had already voted absentee. We stumbled on this. All of us six election judges had previously voted absentee, but six out of our six names, when pulled up on the poll pad, did not show that. The system would've allowed us to vote a second time. We all agreed that we should stress-test the system by trying to cast a second ballot. So, one judge did, and it went right through. I immediately called the election authority to bring this big problem to their attention, and Kurt Barr, Director of Elections, actually came to our polling place at the end of the day, but he did not have an answer for how or why this could occur. That was three weeks ago. I've since called Barr's office twice and left voicemails asking if they had identified the flaw and fixed it. He has not returned my phone calls. And rather than thanking us six election judges for uncovering a problem that he was unaware of, Mr. Barr actually reported three of us for election fraud, for the one extra vote that was cast as a test.
Thank you, sir.
And we've all been seen by a police detective now. So, I guess the only thing I can guess is Mr. Barr doesn't want the public to know what we discovered with his system.
Ally Graff.
Good evening. Let me get this. My name's Ally Graff, and I'm here from St. Charles County, and I'm here to provide the council with some additional information that I'm assuming maybe you aren't aware of if we're talking about certifying election results. Here in St. Charles County, we use Open Elect, specifically 1.3, the version 1.3, which per the HAVA Act and federal law, and specifically, I'm talking about Certificate of Accreditation. There's two different certificates. Certificate of Accreditation, Certificate of Conformance. Certificate of Conformance is useless unless this is valid. Now, I have gotten all this information from the Secretary of State, and the laboratory that tests our machines and should be accredited is Wiley Technology, is this Wiley Laboratories. But NTS absorbed Wiley, okay? And NTS has never once been accredited. Now, per, now, the accreditation is what gives them the authority to certify our machines. So, if Wiley, and it says down here, let me put this here, it says down there that it expires in April of 2012. And our machines have to, anytime a modification and update, anything is done, it has to be tested by an accredited lab. And to be accredited, it goes with, you have to test or certify the conflict of interest, company annual report, names of board of directors, current and previous, major shareholders, insurance bonds, and audited financials. Now, I don't know about you, but if Wiley Technology is not gonna have the same, any of those, as NTS is. Now, NTS has pulled out of their accreditation. So, who's testing our machines? Who's testing 1.3? Who's testing Open Elect? Because we have no accredited, per federal law, they have to be accredited. Now, the Certificate of Conformance is given to the manufacturers for voting systems that have successfully met the standard of the EAC program. In the EAC program, the EAC has been designated the federal, sole federal election authority, and we have to hold the EAC accountable if they're not doing their job. So, we have machines that we're using that are against federal law, that are against state law, so I would, knowing this information, and I can provide you this, I can, these are all on the Secretary of State's website. I have informed the Secretary of State, I've informed Kurt Barr, I've filed 40 maladministrations against our elected officials that I've let know that have not even replied.
Thank you.
Brenda Webb.
Okay, I'm Brenda Webb. Thank you. I just have some questions, you know, in light of, you know, this was, has been on the radio and so forth, and so my question's about all of this happening in Augusta, you know, on Election Day, was if the election authority was notified of poll pads not working midday, as I understand it, why weren't they pulled out of service right then? Why were they not pulled out of service? What kind of forensic audit was done on those poll pads to determine what the problem was and ensure it won't happen again? There, I guess there would've been three poll pads for six judges. What kind of audit was done on all the other poll pads to be sure we didn't have the same problem in every, you know, voting precinct in this county on Election Day? We don't know, unless it's something is verified. So, what kind of audit was done, well, and we need it verified? So, my question about the certification is what is entailed in certifying the election? Who, you know, who certifies it? Is there a sworn affidavit? Because it seems like that is a legal, you know, statement, it should be a legal statement that somebody makes. I verify, certify that this is correct, and I would like to know if that is received, if you guys accept that, how do we, how do you know? Have you done an audit? Have you done your due diligence to make sure that those numbers are correct? That's what I want to know. You know, is there a sworn affidavit by the election director or whoever? Is there a sworn affidavit by an outside auditor? We need an outside auditor, I think, but, and if not, why not? Who's gonna put their name on that line and say, "I take responsibility for this"? That's my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've had three speakers on this topic. Are there other speakers who are?
One more card on election integrity.
Okay. I think we can allow one more person.
Jen Olson.
We can't really read that, though.
We got a copy of it, I think.
Oh, is this, okay. All right. All right. I got it. Okay. Go ahead, then. Your time starts.
I'm Jen Olson. First, I have a message for my daughter. Today's her fifth birthday. Happy birthday, pretty princess. I'm sorry mommy isn't at home building a unicorn habitat with you on your special day. I know one day you'll understand why mommy has to fight so hard, day in and day out, to do what I can to preserve your freedom and leave you with a better country than the mess we have right now. I have a list of issues that I would like Kurt Barr to address tonight, and if he cannot, I ask that the council vote to accept the election results, be postponed until Mr. Barr can answer these questions reasonably in a public setting. Speaking of, where is he?
I don't think he was asked to be here today, so.
Well, I mean, he's part of the county official.
Every county official isn't here.
This is on.
But go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
This is kind of a big deal, and he's on the agenda tonight. Did the election authority actually identify the flaw in their system that prevented absentee voters from being flagged as already voted? If so, what did they do to fix it to ensure it can't happen again? Why did Kurt Barr weaponize the police department against a bipartisan team which his own office trained to identify election integrity issues? Why not thank the bipartisan team of election workers for finding the flaw in the system? When receiving voter data from the county, why isn't the Dropbox link password protected and have an expiration date? Why isn't the voter data Excel spreadsheet encrypted and password protected? On the SCC Mo election results website, the official final election results still show provisional votes as zero. We all know there was provisional votes. When a constituent of Joe Brazel's voted on a provisional ballot, and according to the SC for Winsville School Excel spreadsheet, her vote did not count. We found another incident with a different constituent of Joe Brazel's where their vote did not count. In fact, it has this voter's status as inactive. It says the voter's registration date was 9/19/2019, but in fact, they voted in the following elections, '96, '97, '98. The voters only lived in St. Charles County for eight to 10 years. Why did it take several hours for the polls to close, after the polls closed, to get the Winsville School Board election numbers when everybody else was reporting? Hours before Winsville. Why is it that the election authority will give the voter list data with everyone's personal information on it, but they refuse to give us the scanned ballot images that contain no identifying information except circled bubbles? We'd like to see the scanned ballot images so we can verify the election results ourselves, since we can't trust our election authority. We're asking that the results of our municipal elections countywide not be certified until all of these issues have been addressed and explained in detail to the public. We must be able to trust our system.
Thank you, ma'am.
Concerning Bill 5056, Kelly Waite.
Good evening.
I'm Kelly Waite. I live at 2083 Eisenbach Road. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. Guys, I went up and down Eisenbach Road and talked to 25 different homes, got their signatures. I think you guys already saw it. You guys need a copy of it?
We did.
These are the ones I talked to.
It has been disseminated to all the council members.
Thank you much. What they said was that, every one of them said no. They said no to change to a three-acre minimum. They said, "Why change? To create more traffic? And why change the rural nature of this area?". And the folks that I talked to, they don't care about the zoning protection that comes from the three-acre minimums that you have. A lot of the folks have gravel drives up to their street or their house. A lot of them have pole barns. A lot of them have farm fields and horses, some horses and farm field. They don't care about HOAs. Some of them have 10 acres, some have 20 acres, one has 76 acres, and a lot of them have three acres. But every one of them said, "No, they don't want it. They don't want more traffic. They don't want more houses." They just said, "No". Even if they had three acres, they said, "No". So, we need to preserve this rural area. This applies to the 71 acres as well as the rest of the 390 acres. So, changing the zoning to three acres just so they can make more houses is just, is not the greater good. Please vote no to, from changing zoning to three-acre minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further speakers.
Raymond Gerard.
Yes, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Ray Gerard. I live at 142 Kirsting Farms Drive. In addition, I was one who actually submitted the petition that Kelly Waite had gotten signed, and I had gotten some additional signatures, and as it has been disseminated to you, yeah, there's a total of 48 people that have signed the petition, which is really a significant number of people in the area. And there's a reason why they did it. You know, at the last meeting, it was indicated that people in the area really didn't oppose this zoning change. Well, 48 people in this area is a big number. It was indicated that, you know, there are three-acre subdivisions to the north and three-acre subdivisions to the south, and so this just, this three-acre proposal just fits right in. Well, as the petition points out, in fact, the subdivision to the north and the south, I mean, one on the south, the average lot size is 4.23, which is relatively close to the, it's approaching the five-acre size that we have under the current zoning. Subdivision to the north, it's also, on average, about four acres. And that makes, that makes a sizable difference when you're talking about 390 acres and how many lots could be developed on that property. In fact, if you disregard, if you don't look at the subdivision to the north and the south, and obviously you have to, but just to get a sense of the rest of the area around it, average lot size in the 50 surrounding lots is actually 21 acres. This is a rural farming type of area. Now, we understand this property will be developed. We understand that, and the property owner obviously has a perfect right to do that. What I think the people in the area are really saying is that there can be a sizable number of lots developed on this property. Oh, I should point out, too, that there's an error in the petition. It talks about 367 new lots. It meant to say 367 acres, so that's an error. But there'd still be a development of three acres, which is 30% more than the subdivisions to the north and south combined. And that's just a lot for this property. You know, it was indicated before to you that, well, they're only submitting 70 acres right now for development, and there are really no plans to develop the rest of the property. To me, that sounds like something that would strain my credulity. People don't buy large tracts of land to sit on them. So, in any event, we do hope you take notice of the fact that the people in the area do believe that five-acre zoning is perfectly sufficient, the property owner can still, you know, develop a large number of lots, and that would be in keeping with really what this area has as its current character. So, we thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Further comments.
Arne Dinoth.
Good evening. How are you?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman and members of the county council.
My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoth, public advocate, running for county executive. First of all, at the last meeting, my county councilman Joe Cronin called me a derogatory term, called me a cuss word in a public meeting, and it is heard on the microphone system, and I encourage my fellow residents to go back and listen to the demification and the libel and slander that Mr. Cronin placed towards me, and I'm asking this county council admonish him and ask him to apologize to me and the general public. Now, you, a few months ago, have decided to put in a security checkpoint. It totally defeats the purpose of public safety for all because you give free passes and pick and choose which elected officials get by with a pass around your neck and which directors of departments get a free pass. One director went through the security like a normal citizen, and one director was given a free pass to go around the metal detector. Who's gonna say that we don't get a disgruntled employee and that a gun has snuck into these county council chambers? I'm sending to report to the county council that we have a huge black eye on our county and its structure. The county college district board of trustees are against citizens speaking and testifying on college district legislation, or now they've threatened them with arrest. Gene Elman, the wife of county executive, Mr. Elman is one of the members. Shirley Lomar, the mom of county prosecuting attorney Tim Lomar, Pam Selick, Mary Stotton, Rose Mack, and Mike Listner. Shameful elected college trustees. It's called tyranny. It's resulted in tyranny, a dictatorship, which is very unconstitutional, illegal, and hate towards our county citizens. Its unbecoming conduct is stymie and treat our 411 county citizens as prisoners and not important when it comes to free speech and public testimony on items that are before our college district board of trustees. It takes away our voice to comment and bring our grievances to elected officials. We pay taxes and bonds, pathetic government and terrible leadership that is self-serving and serving special interests of these trustees. Not a republic, undemocratic. Not a republic, undemocratic, and un-American. Resorts to a Russian dictatorship or Nazi Germany once again. Again, there's no internal affairs investigation from Sheriff Scott Lewis, which I filed, and you all saw a copy. We have a Mickey Mouse Barney Fife entity of a sheriff's office on discrimination and civil rights violations of Deputy Doug Santos, which I brought to your attention at the security checkpoint a number of months ago, and the sheriff ignores it, who's sitting in the back of the room. The county councilor, Rory O'Sullivan, shaking me down for money to see electronic county records, sits over there with a smirk on his face and refuses to release the public documents. Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. The final speaker.
That's the final speaker. Oral report from the county executive.
None this evening, Madam Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove the election authority. I'll second.
All those in favor, there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Concerning the balance of the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll place the, is there a time limit for us accepting the election totals? Do you know, Joanne?
I don't. I was just actually going to look.
Okay. So we want to make sure that we have Mr. Barr here next time. Okay. Okay, bills for final passage first.
We're going to talk about that.
I have a comment.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we took it off.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, you want to discuss it? I'm sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
In looking at the agenda, I think it's important to see, the only thing that we're certifying is the transportation sales tax. If you go, if you scroll down to the, on the consent agenda, okay, under miscellaneous electin' gen, and click on it, okay, the only thing it's got is the transportation sales tax. That being said, you put this together, it does, there's some, definitely, we need some answers from Mr. Barr, I believe, okay? But we just got this today, and I don't want to take a chance of jeopardizing the transportation sales tax, which was approved by, let me finish, let me finish, okay? Only thing we're approving, certifying the total is the transportation sales tax. It's not, let me finish, please. It's my turn to talk, okay? Read the packet, that's what it says, okay? The points are legitimate, and they need to be investigated, but tonight, we're passing transportation sales tax, which we need, which we need to continue the funding of our roads. After that, then we can talk to Mr. Barr about these concerns, okay? We're not certifying the school board elections or any other ones.
Public comment has ended. Just listen to Mr. Cronin.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right.
We provided evidence that nothing's legal.
Mr. Brazel, our chair recognizes Mr. Brazel.
Hold on, guys. First of all, Joe, just for a point of clarity here, the election, the road tax doesn't, isn't initiated till next year. So there's no time thing on that. And I guess the valid, we all know that there's points with this election that deserve to be answered. Kurt Barr does not own our elections. We own the elections. And so, we're deserved to answer some of these questions. And with what happened in Augusta is a fact, and I was on the phone with him that night as well, and the question I had asked, we had sent multiple questions to Kurt, and the response to me is not satisfactory at all. Today, I did send him an email, told him he should be here. I did tell him there would be people coming in, by the way, because it's important that he entrusts some of these concerns. But it's why were six judges, why were the six judges' names on the voter registration list shown as not voted when all six voted absentee during training? Why wouldn't it, he said that he, and I'll let him give his reasons, but according to him, the Wi-Fi was low at the church in Augusta, but they were all on their phones and they were streaming all day, so I don't know that story. But if the iPads aren't adequate, why were they there all day? And then, why weren't they preloaded if they voted days in, before the actual election? And after the judges discussed the problem, they decided to have one judge vote to confirm their concerns? They all agreed, these three Democrats and three Republicans, there's a problem, and one of the judges did vote, and it did go through. How is that possible? And then when we preside these, they preside these concerns to Mr. Barr, he actually called the police on him and had the cops come out and investigate these guys for voter fraud. It's not fraud if he tell them what you're doing and the intent, there's no fraud. He were trying to prove that the election, there's some issues. And some of the numbers, if you look at the numbers on some of the candidates in the Winnsville School District and other school districts that are much higher, the absentee ballots are tremendously higher than the other ones, it doesn't make sense as far as the numbers. And when you ask questions, there's no response. Somebody asked if we could get the, what is it? We'd like to see the scanned ballot images. Why can't we verify the election results ourself? And crickets, no response. And why are we doing absentee ballots 24 hours before the election? I don't understand that at all. And I don't know who makes those policies. Do we make those policies, or is it the election authority? Do we know? Does anybody know?
I assume it's the election authority in accordance with the law.
Is that what it is?
There's statutes in chapter 115 and 116, and then the charter says that the elected election authority has sole control over the actual election.
Okay, so, on this, what we have before us tonight, do we actually validate the whole election or just what the county put out on the ballot? Do you guys know?
It says the general municipal election. I don't know what the definition.
You're certifying our election.
The county election, not the school districts or any subdivisions. We had one issue on the ballot.
We had one issue.
That's the only issue the county had.
Okay. So the other issues, the other totals, they don't get certified or validated?
Not by us. They're not our issue.
Who does that?
They would do that with their jurisdiction.
So the school districts or the cities? I don't know. Well.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, this road tax overwhelmingly passed, but the question is, is do we pass something that we're not, we're saying that it's authenticated, that it's actually, that it's correct. Do we, if we vote on this, then we're saying we know that it's valid. Should we, should we ask some questions to see what, if there's mayor not problems? I'm sure they're, I'm sure, well, it probably would have passed because it was such a huge number, but is there some concerns we should have about all these other issues? These are real issues. And there could be an explanation, and if there is, then so be it, and we're good, and we should, can be, feel comfortable the next election. But otherwise, shouldn't we be concerned with some of these problems? You got somebody's grandmother who moved and hadn't voted in her location since 2006 and her, she was voted in 2020? Those, I know these folks. I don't understand this. Why is this stuff going on? And not to think that these are serious issues, you multiply it by 30 or multiply it by 100, then that's how you lose elections, to people who are fraudently voting. And so, it's a concern. It really is.
Madam Chairman, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable passing this until we've had a chance to hear what Kurt Barr has to say.
Mr. Cronin.
My only concern is by not certifying, are we in any way putting jeopardy the outcome of the election, okay? I don't know if the attorneys can address that, okay? I'm talking specifically the outcome of the transportation sales tax, okay?
I know it has to be certified, but is there a time limit?
Do we have the time to delay for two weeks, is my question? I did send an email out to Kurt Barr, okay, to find out, because if we can push it off without jeopardizing that tax, maybe that's fine.
I think Joanne's looking up the state statute.
Well, Rory and I are trying to beat each other.
You and Rory.
We found one that says you can't do it before the Friday after the election. We're looking for one as to whether or not there's a limit.
Okay.
Do you hear, I'll brush that sound though, that question?
This is not, this is not a debate. I'm sorry, folks, that's just not the way we do business here.
This is our, this is our point.
It is your, and public comment is for you to make your comments.
Three minutes, we're closing. We're coming.
Okay.
Why are you rolling your eyes?
I'm not rolling my eyes, sir. That's disrespectful. I think we should have respectful and civil communication here. But shouting from out there is not in keeping with the way we're trying to do business here. We're listening to what you said, we're trying to determine what we need to do tonight, and I would ask you to please just wait until we find out what the issue is on certification.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think there's any reason we shouldn't allow Mr. Barr to come in and explain these things to us.
I don't think anyone has said he shouldn't come in. I think we all agree.
You know, and I would, you know, the sooner the better, and obviously, tonight would have been great, but next meeting would be sufficient as long as it doesn't impair anything, which I don't see how it would.
I don't either, but we're just checking. I guess the other issue is that I know, Mr. Brazel, you had a lot of direct communication with Mr. Barr. I didn't, and I don't know if any of the other council members did, so you have information that I think some of us didn't.
No, I do, and I didn't know until this afternoon that folks were going to come in. And I said, I told Kurt that there will be people coming in that are concerned with some issues, so you should show up, and maybe he has something else going, I have no idea. But we tried to talk some of these things through, and the responses were just kind of vague and not getting to the actual point of what the question was. And so, I think these are things that absolutely need to be talked about, and maybe, I don't know, we have, we got to have open forum, because people have to be comfortable with what's going on with our elections. We all know that.
I agree. I think we all, we all agree that our elections are sacred and they need to be done correctly.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Elam.
Can I propose that we are not voting on this right now? It's something that we can come back to in the meeting.
Sure.
So while they're trying to find out, to give staff an opportunity to get some points of clarification, how about if we move forward with the rest of the agenda and then come back and revisit it to find out if we're there? But I have no problems with holding this over to the other meeting, or to the next meeting if we can.
Mr. Cronin.
And I don't have a problem either, as long as it doesn't jeopardize the transportation. But just so, for record of it, I sent Kurt Barr, his wife, and his official email for an answer, and I specifically asked him, can we delay this and not jeopardize the transportation sales tax vote? So let's see what he comes back with.
Oh, you just said that now.
Mr. Barr just texted me back and said, "We do not have to do this tonight."
Okay, very good. All right. Okay, so I think we've agreed then to remove that from the agenda, and then as far as the other items that are on the consent agenda, I thought we did already vote on those.
Yes.
We did. Okay, all right. So then we were moving on then to bills for final passage. The first bill being 505056, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to RR single-family residential district per application, RZ 22-02. Okay. Is there a discussion? Mr. Cronin, I think.
We have lots of discussion on this one. So I don't know if we want to do it, like, I think there's two separate actions, so we're going to have to talk about them separately. So for this particular one, I think for starters, I would like to have page 17 of the bill pulled up on the screen, if the AV people can do so. I think it's a lot easier to explain this by doing that, okay? It's a map that shows the area and both subdivisions that border this property.
Is there somebody back there who's going to do that?
Page 17.
Page 17, I'd like to get it on the big screen if we can.
Yeah.
Makes, will make life a lot easier. Tell them it's on page 17 if you download it on the county site.
While we're doing that.
Okay. While we're doing, let's just give a little background on the area, okay? The area between Highway 79 and Highway 61 consists, and north of 70, let's be more specific, north of Highway P consists of towns of Flynn Hill, Josephville, and St. Paul. Josephville, which is close to this development, they're strictly three acres. That's the only thing Josephville has, three acres. Flynn Hill has half acre and three acre. That's their two zoning classifications. However, where they're close to Winnsville, they're starting to allow some smaller subdivisions come in. St. Paul is basically three acres, one acre if there's public water and sewer, and then they do have some smaller subdivisions with lots as small as a quarter acre. Okay, that's, okay, this might be good enough to see. Okay, so that's just the general area. Now, when you get further away from Highway P and you get out in the hinterlands, okay, you'll see a lot of more five-acre developments, and those are typically unregulated developments, not a lot of restrictions, typically gravel roads. And they're primarily developments where Grandma and Grandpa farmed this land for, you know, for their lifetimes, and they're starting to sell off or give five-acre lots to grandkids. If you remember, we changed the minor subdivision plot, the farm families that came in here, and they won debt because they couldn't afford to put paved streets in, and they needed it, they needed five-acre lots in the rural areas. But this is a little different critter here. This is, and I do not think the presentation at P&amp;Z was really done well. I've talked to the landlord quite a few times about it, because I've worked with him for 20 years, both as an alderman in St. Paul and as a councilman. But if you look right here, the folks that are opposition to this are at the bottom, and there are three-acre lots subdivisions called Kirstine Farms, and if you look to the far left corner, that's Eisenbath Road, and this farm does have access to Eisenbath Road, and they're concerned about the traffic on Eisenbath Road, because Eisenbath is a very minor road with not a lot of plans for, you know, for future improvements. However, Framuth Road is another critter. That road is actually a corridor that leads all the way down. Framuth runs into Guthrie Road, which runs into Lake St. Louis exit. So there are plans for that road to be improved down the road, and this, and this particular landowner has dedicated 30 foot for improvements of that. He does not have any plans to access the property for any type of subdivision development of Eisenbath at this point. He also doesn't have any plans to develop anything of that center property that you see between the two three-acre subdivisions. He owns better than 1,000 acres, I believe, up in that area. He's got, I think, at least three other subdivisions besides these that are all three-acre or five-acre subdivisions. What I think's important to point out here is the folks who have signed the petition and are concerned about Eisenbath Road and live in Kirstine Farms, they're 2,000 foot away from the proposed subdivision. That's nearly a half a mile. The three-acre subdivision to the north, that's the old Vogely Sang Farm, and the sign says Birdsong Meadows, Vogely Sang Farm. That's a prominent family in St. Paul, anybody that's lived there a long time like me know them. They didn't have an objection to this, nor did we get a single objection to those folks on the, on the, on the three-acre subdivision to the north. That's right above the three acre that you see, it would be the very top of the map, okay? And I think the reason you're seeing that is the three-acre subdivisions in this particular area tend to be higher-end subdivisions. You have streets that are built to county standards and then dedicated to the county, and that's what this landowner has proposed to do. I did notice, I drove to Kirstine Farms on Sunday, it's typical from some older three-acre subdivisions where the streets weren't built to county standards, they're typically cracked up and full of potholes. One of the advantage of a three-acre subdivision with county streets is you don't have that. Those residents don't have that, cost over and over again to fix the streets. So that's one reason I prefer three acres, so does St. Paul, Flynn Hill, and Josephville that area. The other thing is, if this was developed strictly to county's minimum rules, you could have lots, or homes as small as 1,000 square foot. This particular developer, landowner, his restrictions call for 2,500 to 3,000 square foot homes, which you'll be seeing pictures of down the road. This will be equivalent to like Stone Castle or Castle Rock, some of the other subdivisions in the area that typically have 500 to a million dollar homes. Also, there's stuff like the garages have to have their instances, the outbuildings have to have, they have to match the houses. So typically, a lot more upscale subdivision than a five acre. I do hear the folks down on Kirstine Farms and Eisenbath loud and clear. I live in the area, too, I have most of my life, and I talked to the landlord and told him specifically, if he decides to develop down, the lower portion down the road, since the lots in Kirstine Farm average 4.2 acres, that needs to be a larger lot subdivision down there. And with the, the power lines, there's two large power lines that go right above Kirstine Farms. He's going to have to do that anyway. The land, the topography of that land won't work for three acres. So he's already said, "I don't have any plans of doing it for a long time." You know, he owns a lot of ground, and he's going to have to come back for the council before he does anything with that. There's no plans for that portion, which is three, over 300 acre. There's no plans for that portion, which is three, over three hundred acres in the middle. There's no plans for using Eisenbath Road for the folks that are concerned about Eisenbath. So for that reason, you know, I've got to look in my job, and I take it pretty seriously, what's, what's the highest and best use for that community, for that whole St. Paul area that I, you know, that I've represented often on for twenty years in one position or the other? And I contend that higher-end homes on three-acre lots with paved streets to county standards and, and some restrictions that keep it nice for, for years to come are better than just doing a Wild West-type five-acre development with gravel streets and no restrictions, is what I'm hearing some of these folks want. So for that reason, I am supportive of this, and I think it's also important that the folks that are closest to this development, the folks that live above the proposed subdivision at the top of this map, you know, they have no objections to it as well. I spoke with the mayor of St. Paul, which Framuth Road shortly above that connects to Church Road, which Church Road is called Church Road because it leads to St. Paul Church. And the mayor of St. Paul said, I don't understand why folks are upset about that. And I think because, be frank with you, all the stuff that came to light since planning and zoning changes the outcome of it. So all that being said, that's my opinion of it. I think it fits well with the community. I think it's going to be an attribute to the community. And as far as the three hundred acres below this proposed subdivision, I'll tell you folks at Kirstine Farms and the folks on Eisenbath Road, if anything happens with that, I'll be happy to talk to you as much as I have to. Mr. Wade, I've reached out to you several different times and talked to you. I reached out to you, sir, too, but you didn't return my call or my email. But when, before that happens, before there's a subdivision put in Kirstine Farms, if I'm still in office, you can bet you I'll spend a lot of time talking to you. There's another one coming, a St. Paul subdivision coming next month into, for this board, and coming in May, and I've talked to every neighbor adjacent to that subdivision in the same kind of detail I did with you, Mr. Wade, to explain. And basically, that one got approved unanimously by planning and zoning, because they did a lot better job presenting it. I don't think you folks got all the information on planning and zoning, and for that, I'm sorry, but that's not my charge. But that's all I have to say.
Yes, Mr. Brazel.
No.
No, no, sir. Mr. Brazel.
If you guys remember the last meeting, I am going to disagree with Mr. Cronin here, and we talked about it on the phone a little bit, but at this meeting last, we were talking about three acres versus five acres, and I, and I am going to support the one off Highway N. And I explained, and he said right up here, well, I guarantee you, my, this subdivision is going to be closer to the city than yours. Well, I had Robert run the numbers, and the nearest city limit to this subdivision is three point six one miles to Wentzville, one point two seven miles of Josephville, and point six four miles of St. Paul, which St. Paul doesn't have the infrastructure to carry this anyway, so they have to go three acres anyway. And those other two, St. Joseph's don't have the infrastructure, and Wentzville, it'd take years to get contiguous with this piece of property. The subdivision that I'm looking at is seventy feet from Wentzville, so it makes sense to go with a three-acre subdivision there because it blocks up a dam, it sets a dam. So when me and John White sponsored this bill back in '06, the reason we sponsored this bill is you get three-acre subdivisions all over the place, you're going to ruin the character of the rural area, and you've got small towns strong out there at St. Paul, Flint Hill, Josephville. It's a small rural community, everyone knows everybody, and people live out there because of the way it is, and we're going to ruin this county and the rural areas by keep on overdeveloping it and overdeveloping it, and it's a big mistake. And for to say you put a thousand square foot house on a lot that costs $200,000, I highly doubt that's true.
You can.
It's not going to happen, and developer can, he's going to put restrictions, that's up to the developer, he will put restrictions if people are spending that kind of money on lots. Just so we know, let's be clear here, the three-acre subdivisions that are contiguous with this piece, they were platted in 1995, okay? This is something that was done a long, almost thirty years ago. We changed this in 2006 because we could see the future, and the community development at the time saw all these septic tanks and all these other issues, so we're trying to open up the space and keep the space rural, and that's why we have the five-acre subdivisions. This was turned down by planning and zoning. I don't know if staff turned it down, but this, this requires a remonstrance, isn't that right? Is there a five super majority on this?
So for the rezoning, it only requires a simple majority. For the preliminary plat, it requires a minimum of five votes.
So, okay, was there a remonstrance filed on this?
Not to my knowledge.
Are you done?
No, not quite. I'm just saying that I don't see a whole lot of people in here supporting this. I do see people in here, there was forty-eight people that signed a petition that's opposed to this. I think as, as a representative, we're, we're to represent the elected officials and not the people who want to make money off selling their ground. And they, they're here before us because we're here to make a decision on what is the best practice of how we're going to develop a rural area. And I know we kind of have a rule that if the representative is representing that area, then you try to give them space to represent the area and not be involved in zoning issues. However, these kind of things, once we start to creep, it's going to creep into my area too in rural areas, and people don't want the development down there, so I won't support this.
Mr. Cronin.
If St. Paul's six tenths of a mile away, I just tell you, St. Paul has water, enough water to serve this. And so this could be a Riverdale-type subdivision. In fact, the owner of this land was the previous owner of the land for Riverdale, okay? He has no intention of that. It's three acres. Mr. Brazel, everybody you know in St. Paul, I know, and I'm going to tell you, darn near all of them live on three-acre tracts. That is the norm. I disagree with what you guys did in '06 because the fact that five acres might work in your district down, where we've got hilly ground that's not worth a lot of money for anything. In St. Paul, it's good farmland, it's worth some dough. They're getting one hundred and fifty grand for three-acre lots right now, okay? That's why most of St. Paul, Josephville, and Flint Hill are three-acre lots. That's why those three cities allow three-acre lots. That is the norm, okay? Not the exception, okay? So that being said, I'd much rather see a three-acre lot with restrictions and paved streets than I know it's, and if that happens, you're going to see probably the rest of that three hundred acres go three acres, except for the lower section by Kirstine, with the large power lines and the topography there, you're going to see five-acre lots. At planning and zoning, it wasn't explained well. The folks did not know about drainage, which subsequently, we found out that all the drainage goes under four hundred acres. They were concerned about wildlife because they thought the trees were going to get knocked down. Well, the forested area for the left isn't even getting touched. The tree line between the two subdivisions to the north isn't being touched. Every objection that pretty much was headed toward it planning and zoning was pretty much taken care of with further information from the landlord. The big question here is Eisenbath Road connection ain't going to happen, it's two thousand foot away. This next thing is, is it five acres with gravel streets and very little restrictions, and maybe puts them in, maybe doesn't? Or is it three acres with restrictions? It's going to be a nice subdivision? If you've been lately in St. Paul, if you look in Stone Castle, which is the latest subdivision in St. Paul, I live across the street from it, okay? I wanted to see it three acres, because I wanted to see nicer homes and paved streets. I didn't want to breathe gravel dust, gravel dust. You've got to think, besides these people that are objection to Kirstine Farms, think of those people that are up next to it, and I wish we could scroll this down, it's called Birdsong Meadows. It's a subdivision about as large as Kirstine Farms. Those people are happy with seeing this the way it is. So you've got two sides of every story.
Okay.
One more thing.
Mr. Hammond.
Whenever.
Maybe somebody else.
I mean, this, this property has three-acre lots on both sides. I've never seen us getting such a debate over allowing three acres when there's already three-acre lots on both sides. It doesn't make sense to me, and I support this.
Okay. Do either of you know? Okay, yeah, Mr. Brazel.
Oh, just one more thing.
Wrap it up.
No, I know, Mr. Cronin keeps saying that gravel dust, and all the five-acre subdivisions down in my area were, are concrete with light, they got light posts up. They didn't have to do it, but that's the way they did it. And you say the ground down in my area ain't worth nothing. Well, they had fifteen-acre lots down there on that.
That's it's not worth anything, it's not good farmland like this is.
Well, the lots they got down in, from Lombardo, he had fifteen lots, he had thirty-three applications for the fifteen lots, he got $275,000 apiece for them. So it does work, and people do want to live on large lots, and so the reason is just the whole overall development of the county. And I mean, that's just my perspective, I just can't agree with it, but that's okay.
Okay. Would you read the title and call the roll?
Bill number 5056, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning District Map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single-Family Residential District per application, RZ 22-02. Councilman Brazel.
No.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
No.
Councilman White.
No.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
And what's the, the total?
Passes.
It passed. Okay. The bill passes. Moving on then to bill number 5057.
Bill number 5057, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning District Map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single-Family Residential District per application, RZ 22-03.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please read the title and call the roll.
Bill number 5057, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning District Map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single-Family Residential District per application, RZ 22-03. Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Bill number 5057 passes. Moving on to bill number 5058.
Bill number 5058, An Ordnance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri Approving the Quail Ridge Preliminary Plat.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Cronin?
I would like to have Mr. Weber come up here, and he's, he's got some information that he hasn't had a chance to talk about.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name's Drew Weber with Hamilton Weber Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of Steepleview Farm LLC, which is the property owner. Steepleview Farm is just an entity for the McMenamy family, who they, through Mike McMenamy's grandmother, have owned this property for over a hundred years. And so like Mr. Cronin said, they are a big landowner in the area. And so this is a, has been a family farm, and in fact, the family still uses it actively for recreational purposes and for farming. So I want to be clear that I, I do believe there will be additional homes elsewhere on this subdivision at some point in the future, excuse me, elsewhere on the property at some point in the future. That isn't a short-term plan. I mean, Mr. McMenamy just installed a gate off Eisenbath Road so people would not access the property through there because his family accesses elsewhere for recreational uses on the property. So now specifically with respect to the subdivision, this is again on the northern boundary of the property, so it's directly adjacent to other three-acre homes, right? In fact, none of the homes that are adjacent to this subdivision are more than three and a half acres. All the lots that are directly adjacent to Quail Ridge, which is this subdivision, are three and a half acres. And of all the residents who signed that petition, two-thirds of them live on lots that are three to five acres in size. A majority of them, in fact, live in Kirstine Farms, which is a similar subdivision to this one, right? The lots are slightly bigger, but it's one street in and out off a road, but off a smaller road and a more minor road than what's proposed here. As Councilman Cronin said, we are proposing only one connection to Framuth Road. It is more of a, a significant road to county future plans than Eisenbath Road is. There'd be no reason for anyone to go on Eisenbath Road from this subdivision. This subdivision fits in with the area, and frankly, if you look at the master plan, the master plan calls for this entire area to be a rural residential. So it conglates multiple three-acre subdivisions just like this one. Every signatory on that petition lives on property that is designated by the master plan to be a rural residential. And I know if, if the people in the back can back up a few slides, or maybe I can access it here on the computer, but we have some example, yeah, here we go. So we have some examples of the type of homes that would be built on a subdivision like this, because this is similar to other homes that Mr. McMenamy has developed on rural subdivisions in St. Charles County in the past few years. I don't know if I have click control here, but yeah, here we go. Multiple different style homes, all of which would be nice homes in a nice, small, twenty-two lot development in, in St. Charles County. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. I appreciate Mr. Cronin's comments, and Mr. Brazel, I appreciate yours as well. Just think, the difference here is the county master plan truly has called, that the county approved truly has called for this type of subdivision in this area.
Clarify, it calls for one to four homes per acre, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, that's true. It wouldn't even call for more than.
So this is actually much, much, much less dense than what the county master plan calls for.
It's three acres on that, on that space.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Weber?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes.
And this would be more for Rory. So on this, this does require five. So based on the last vote, and depending on what my council members are going to vote on this one, let's say we end up four-three, obviously, that would not pass.
Correct.
And hit the five-two ratio. Where does that leave us with this development? Just to be clear.
Where it leaves you with this bill is that by the next meeting, my office will have to prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law for you to spread upon the record the reasons why the preliminary plat failed.
So where would that leave, just so everyone understands, where would that leave the applicant at this point? They would have a rezoning.
The rezoning has been granted now, and so, yeah, the preliminary plat would fail so presumably, and I don't want to speak for the department, but I imagine that they would have to resubmit an alternative preliminary plat.
Mr. Hollander.
Yes, I just want to point out that, you know, being on the planning and zoning, and we've encountered this before, I will be voting in favor of the plat. I was, I was against the, you know, the three-acre lots, but since that's already passed, the plans they have for the actual subdivision and the way it's plotted out, I have no problems with that. It's laid out, you know, as well as could be laid out.
But if I understand, Nancy, a no vote would not allow them to do the three-acre subdivision, is that correct?
It's not true. They would have to re-go, they would have to go back and redo their plans, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they couldn't do the three acre. They could bring that back and resubmit it. It just means that that one wouldn't work. Fair?
Mr. Hammond, did you have a comment?
No.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion?
I have nothing for you.
Okay, would you read the title and call the roll?
Bill number 5058, An Ordnance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri Approving the Quail Ridge Preliminary Plat. Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
No.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Bill number 5058 passes. Moving on to the last bill for final passage, 5059.
Bill number 5059, An Ordnance Amending the 2022 Budget as Adopted by Ordinance 21-096 as Amended for Positions Within the Criminal Investigations, Operational Support, and Administrative Services Divisions of the Police Department of St. Charles County.
Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, please read the title and call the roll.
Bill number 5059, An Ordnance Amending the 2022 Budget as Adopted by Ordinance 21-096 as Amended for Positions Within the Criminal Investigations, Operational Support, and Administrative Services Divisions of the Police Department of St. Charles County. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Bill number five zero, excuse me, bill number five zero five nine passes. We have one bill for introduction, bill number five zero six zero.
Bill number five zero six zero, requested by Joe Brazel and Joe Cronin, sponsored by Joe Brazel and Joe Cronin. An ordinance extending the duration within which a conditional use permit must be in place and in active use before it is considered null and void for all permits set to expire during the current two hundred and seventy day extension for a total extension period of four hundred and eighty-seven days from August thirty-first, 2021.
Is there any discussion on this bill? The bill will be voted on at the next regular council meeting. Is there any action on any tabled bills? Hearing none. Any announcements or miscellaneous?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I believe we still have the issue of the election.
You're right.
They were gonna give us whatever information they could find.
Okay. Do we have any further information?
I don't believe that there is anything further you have to do tonight. The statute at one fifteen five oh seven, I believe it is, indicates that the verification board provided an abstract to each jurisdiction of its election results, and upon doing that, the election behind time. So I believe that this is just a receipt by this jurisdiction of our election results, but you don't have to do anything further tonight.
Okay.
I request his presence at the next meeting.
So there was a vote to remove that from the consent agenda, and I think that stands. Yeah, so it'll be carried over to the next. Yes, Mr. Ehlum.
Just for clarification, I mean, the other example of this is some statutes require us to spread on the record certain things, and we generally put that on the consent agenda. Is this the same sort of thing? I mean, it's just...
I don't know, we'll have to do further research into that.
Oh, as to whether it would be back on the consent agenda or some other item?
So the verification board finalized the election results and certified it to you all. What happens if you don't accept it on the consent agenda is a question I don't think we know the answer to sitting here tonight.
Okay.
But we can research that, as well as I presume the council will be requesting Mr. Barr to come and talk about this.
I think the council has all agreed that Mr. Barr should be here at the next meeting. Okay, all right.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, since we have our auditor here tonight, maybe I could look into some of these allegations, specifically about our voting machines. That doesn't sound right to me, but I sure would like the auditor to take a look at it.
Okay. A note is being made. Okay. All right. Okay. Anything else? Any announcements?
I just wanted to welcome my dad to the meeting. It's his first time he got the chance to sit through a county council meeting.
He probably won't be back.
He'll probably, next time I say, hey, do you wanna come up, he'll say, as long as I don't have to come to a county council meeting. That'll be part of the agreement.
He looks pretty happy. He looks pretty happy. Is there a motion then to, Mr. Cronin?
Reverend Ehlum, I would like to know, too, Mike told me that you can pull your belt off and hit him in one swat, one mover, one motion to the arm, so after meeting, would you demonstrate that for us, please?
Suddenly, he can't hear. Did you notice that? He's like, I'm sorry, I can't make out what you were saying there.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned. Okay.